Hey, I'll give you a minute there. Good morning. I hope everybody had a good Independence Day, ready to get back to work. I appreciate everybody attending the July 13th Board of Commissioners informational meeting. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. We'll start off with the invocation, and then move to the pledge of the allegiance. I don't know who's got the invocation, Mr. Shum. You'll start off with that.
Thank you. Those who'd like to join me? I'm His gracious heavenly Father. We thank You, Father, for this beautiful day that You've given to us, for the many, many blessings that You bestowed upon us as individuals, this country, this county. Fathers, we move forward in conjunction with the business of the people. We pray for Your wisdom, Your strength, and Your guidance in helping us to move in a direction that will enhance the lives of all of our citizens. We thank You, Father, for all that You have done for this great nation. This nation cannot have become great without Your intervention, and we thank You so much, Father. We love You, and we pray for those who suffer, and those who mourn, and those in need. Thank You, Father, for it is in Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen.
We're placing the flag at the fact, and then there's one here for you to face, because we don't like to turn our backs. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any recognitions here this morning? I don't see any listed here. Let's recognize the veterans, Mr. Shores.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Good morning, everybody. We have started a good tradition, or at least I believe it is. We like to recognize all of our veterans. So if we have any veterans in the audience, would you please stand and be recognized? Thank you, sir, for your service. Have you ever been given one of our pins? Would you come up and let me give you one? For your service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, if you will lead off our recognition of retirees.
Mr. Chairman, we've got three folks here that's hit the 30-year mark. Ron Leonard from EMS, Casey Tarleton, who works in HR forces, our risk manager, and Lynette Davis, who works out of public health. I think the two folks aren't here, but Casey's here, so if we want to have him stand, we can recognize Casey.
Casey, would you like to say anything? I appreciate you standing up, but I don't know if you'd like to say anything or not.
It's been a nice ride. It's a roller coaster, tough as can be. I've had a little bit of experience here with this town, and everything is like.
We're gonna miss you, that's for sure, and we appreciate your service to us as well, okay? Thank you.
Twenty-fifth of the month club, welcome.
Yeah, I'm a little jealous, huh? Register for public address. Would anybody like to sign up for public address? The sheet's right over here on the table in front of our madam clerk there. Like to move on to the adoption of the agenda. I tell you what, let's excuse... I'm sorry?
Flip it over back. It's almost back and front.
What you looking for?
Oh, okay. Excuse, I'm sorry. Mine was on the back. You got it.
Well, we'd like to excuse our three fellow commissioners. Commissioner Elliott, Commissioner McClure, and Commissioner Mazzale.
Motion to excuse.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the adoption of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda?
Seeing and hearing none.
Debbie, do we have any ideas?
That's over you. There's several changes.
Yeah, there you go.
Would you...
What, senior services?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead and read the...
Senior Services has asked about approval of documents with Guardian Track LLC with Senior Services be added to the consent agenda as Agenda Item 8AE due to it being time-sensitive. The sheriff has requested that request to adjust one full-time SRO position to two part-time, non-benefitted positions be added to the agenda as Agenda Item 8AF due to it being time-sensitive. Mr. Martin has asked that discussion on animal shelter summer adoption fees be added to the deliberation agenda as Agenda Item 9E. Mr. Smith has requested that a closed session for personnel be added, and the sheriff has asked that Agenda Item 9B be removed from the agenda, and it will be placed back on on August the 3rd.
Okay, so we got an 8E.
We got an 8.
8E.
8AE.
Man, we're getting complicated here.
8AF.
And then 8AF, and a 9E.
Okay, the 9E's pretty simple, but...
And they're all on your expanded agendas as well. I've added them all on there.
Okay, all right. So with the amended agenda, do I have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval, Mr. Vice Chairman.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll see if we can get through that. All right, does anybody register for public address?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have two.
Mr. Bartsch? Come on up, please, and you have to pronounce your name. I can't really see it that well.
My name is Richard Bartsch, and I thank the commissioner meeting and for allowing me to speak. I respect you all and appreciate everything that you do. A little bit about myself is I reside here in Lexington, 210 Breckenridge Court, and I'm here... I am a veteran. I served in Southeast Asia, and I'm also retired law enforcement with a disability, so you'll have to be patient with me, because sometimes I don't always get my meaning across. I'm here as a concerned resident where I live at pertaining to the Grace Lee Meadows development that's going on between Highway 8 and Hugh Miller. My property, which is at 210 Breckenridge Court, the rare property, faces that development. I have nothing against the development and the housing, and I realize that's, you know, what's going on, and it's fine. My only concerns is, which I have addressed with the developers, but have gotten to no accord, is they went through, and I have photographs, and they excavated 97 acres of forest and took it and removed it to build the houses. In doing so, what they've done is they excavated all the roots and the balls of the trees and so forth, and it's been gone. Now, they left a border of trees there, standing alongside my property and others, and unfortunately, those trees are dying. Now, I have a pretty large building beside 50 feet from that property line, and what's happening is the trees are falling and they're dying. So consequently, my property is a concern because my building and the trees coming my way and landed on my building. Now, I'm hoping that someone can help me or understand the predicament I'm in and realize that all I'm trying to do is prevent something from happening, which is gonna happen, because if 97 acres of forest is no longer there and the trees are gone, the winds just come through, like, wow! And the trees that have been left along that border are dying, and they're gonna fall, and it's gonna ruin my property, my fence line, and my building. And that's what I'm here and concerned about. And I have spoken with Randy Thomason, who's one of the developers for it, and he's even come out to my property and seen what's going on. However, I'm here to speak today to try to see exactly and let you people know what I'm up against. And again, it's not something where I'm trying to be difficult with the developers in any way. The housing is what it is gonna be, but what they're not understanding is just that. And if I could, with your permission, maybe this would get my meaning across a little bit.
Three minutes, Mr. Bartsch.
Yes.
We'll give him another minute or so, okay? There's a three-minute time limit, but do you got pictures to show?
Yeah, I'll just show you these, and then I'll be done if I can.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm not sure, you know, what we can do about it, but I will let Mr. Leonard talk to you. That's him right back there, and, you know, if it's somebody else's property, then we don't have a whole lot of control over that. But Mr. Leonard, if you will get with him...
Yeah, I've met with Mr. Leonard before and everything, and addressed it with him.
You know, it's just one of those unfortunate... But, you know, I would guess the property owner would be liable if he does have something that falls on your property. So thank you for your time, and they'll give you your pictures back there, and...
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, 7A.
We...
Is that where we're at?
I think there's one other individual to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, there are. Kathy Browder. Sorry about that. Hey, good morning.
Thank you. Don't forget me, I've got some...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm Kathy Browder, and I just want to thank you guys for the fireworks show last week in Thomasville at a park, it's a baseball field.
Hughes Park.
Hughes Park. My son and I went, and it was like an old-time get-together. We saw Commissioner Shores there. He was out shuttling people around from the parking to where we viewed the fireworks, and I'm sure there were others of you there that I didn't see, but thank you for that. It was a very nice evening, and we appreciated the fireworks.
Well, thank you. I'm gonna call Kathy Browder up again.
Yeah, don't forget me. You just never know. I'm just like that box of chocolates. You just never know.
Take this opportunity to...
Nice to hear good things.
...sit back there to the left with the green is the man who organized this process, and Commissioner Shores was very instrumental in helping out, and thank you so much. That means a whole lot.
You are welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, and all the folks on the Park and Rec Board, we appreciate it.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
If I may, I would just like to publicly thank our Parks and Rec Department. They did an absolutely amazing job. Thomas did an all-hands-on-deck. Every single one of his folks was out there from, what, 6 o'clock that morning, Thomas, and worked effortlessly. I mean, these guys just, I mean, they make it look like it was nothing, the way that they put it on and the way they handled things. So we really do appreciate them. And Sheriff, thank you for sending some deputies. We appreciate that, so...
All right, thank you all. Okay, sorry about that. Now we'll move on to 7A, public hearing. Jason's not wanting to give up his seat this morning, is he? He gave you that dirty... He gave you that dirty look when you walked in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam and fellow commissioners. I was hoping this morning was gonna be very, very quick with respect to the rezonings, but the first one, Ms. Erhardt, if you folks will remember, back in June 12th, we tabled or continued Ms. Erhardt under the pretense that she was gonna withdraw. She received a negative recommendation from the planning board on May 16th and indicated to our department that she wanted to withdraw. We've been in contact with Ms. Erhardt. I know Josh has spoke with her several times and tried to get her to sign the withdrawal form, and we never could accomplish that. We emailed it to her. All she needed to do was sign it and email it back to us. So I would recommend that we open the public hearing after I read the legal, and our staff's recommendation is to deny. We'll see if anyone's here to speak on it. I know Ms. Erhardt will not be here, because she's moved on and walked away from the project.
Okay.
So I'll read the legal, and then we can open the public hearing. We have a request by Barbara Erhardt to rezone property located in Thomasville Township, tax map 340F, lots 4 and 5, containing 1.13 acres more or less. Said property is located on the north and east side at the end of Keppley Circle approximately 225 feet north of the upper Lake Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RS Low Intensity Residential District to that of RA3 Rural Agricultural District. Miss, I would ask if anyone is here to speak on behalf of the Erhardt rezoning, I assume we need to open the public hearing.
I declare the public hearing open.
This property, briefly, Mr. Chairman and Board, this property was existing planted subdivision. It does have deed restrictions that restrict to stick-built homes only. We subsequently, in '73, zoned RS to allow for the only stick-built or modular homes. Ms. Erhardt was attempting to rezone for a double-wide manufactured home. Staff's recommendation was to be consistent with the existing development pattern, the RS zoning, and recommend denial, and we would stand by that at this time.
Okay, is anybody here to speak in favor or against? Seeing no one, I will close this public hearing. Staff's recommendation is to deny, so do we have a motion?
Motion to deny, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right.
Our next item is Richard Adams and Susan Adams, and we would ask the board to continue this until the... Let's apologize, the...
814.
814.
Okay.
We still haven't ironed out a few issues at the planning board level, and they've continued it to 81, so we expect to be able to hear this on 814 if we could continue it to that date.
Okay, do I have a motion to continue this?
Motion to continue.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you. That was short and sweet, though.
Right, thank you. Jason's happy again, he gets to come back.
They get him smiling all the way up there. They get him smiling all the way up there.
And he can get his cup of coffee.
All right, the consent agenda, eight, item eight. Uh, does anybody wanna pull anything off the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh... Okay, uh, United Way proclamation?
Um, folks from United Way are here, and I'll call them up. Um, we've got a longstanding relationship with United Way, um, in the, like, August timeframe, every year we kinda do a ca- a capital campaign here in the county with employees. Uh, so Christie's asked us to, asked the board to, uh, take a look at making August, uh, the United Way Month essentially for the campaign, so she's here on behalf of them.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Good morning, Davidson County Commissioners, staff, and guests. My name is Christie Heggie, and I'm the president for United Way of Davidson County. I have my partner in crime here, our campaign director, Ms. April Rich, and I would like to sincerely thank each of you for recognizing the positive impact United Way has had in our community for over six decades, and for declaring August as Live United Month. As the proclamation states, it is our mission to bring together community resources to identify and meet the human service needs in Davidson County. Our superpower is uniting our community to solve problems that no one organization can do alone. I brought along a small visual, so April can show that to you all and hopefully to the guests behind me, that highlights our work in two thousand and twenty-two. We currently fund positive life-changing programs for twenty-five local nonprofits here in Davidson County. Through those programs, we were able to provide assistance to thirty-four thousand, one hundred and fifteen people in need. This means United Way-funded programs touched over twenty percent of the overall population here in our community. If you consider the ripple effect of those programs, that percentage would most likely rise to forty to fifty percent of the population. We have big dreams for our upcoming campaign. Our goal is to invest one million dollars into our community next year. This year, we are investing nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars into the twenty-five local nonprofits. There is strength in numbers, and we know with our community's support that we can make this dream a reality. Our theme this year is United, We're Strong. I would like to invite each of you to attend our campaign kickoff on Friday, July twenty-eighth, at the J. Smith Young YMCA. I would like to thank you again for this special recognition.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a lot of hard work, I can see.
And I've, I've got proclamation to read.
Yep.
Uh, okay. This is officially declaring August two thousand and twenty-three as United Way of Davidson County Month, whereas from the time of its inception in nineteen fifty-five... Yay, yay. United Way of Davidson County has been strengthening our community, and whereas programs provided by United Way of Davidson County's twenty-five community partners help to tackle some of our community's greatest challenges, including issues such as health, education, and financial stability. And whereas for sixty-eight years, United Way of Davidson County has been committed to ensuring that our children are well-educated, struggling families can achieve self-sufficiency, our community is healthy and safe, our most vulnerable residents are cared for, and that diversity is embraced and celebrated. And whereas for sixty-eight years, United Way of Davidson County has made a substantial impact on its community by way of a strong network of agencies, corporate partners, donors, supporters, volunteers, government entities, civic organizations, and community advocates around the cause. And whereas it is crucial to recognize and support the United Way of Davidson County and highlight how the funding they provided in two thousand and twenty-two has made a positive impact in the lives of thirty-four thousand, one hundred and fifteen community members. And whereas together we can build a strong community and a better future for our children. And whereas the United Way of Davidson County's mission is bringing together community resources to identify and meet the human service needs in Davidson County through responsible leadership. And whereas the United Way of Davidson County will begin its annual campaign on Tuesday, August the first, two thousand and twenty-three. Now therefore, the Davidson County Board of Commissioners, in support of the United Way of Davidson County, hereby proclaim the United Way of Davidson County's annual campaign be recognized and celebrated during the month of August, and encourage all Davidson County residents to look for ways to make a difference in our community, adopted this the thirteenth day of July, two thousand and twenty-three.
Do I have a motion to approve this proclamation?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I would think that would be her motion.
That's my motion.
All in favor?
Second, sorry.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Debbie, is this okay if I give this?
Yes. I'm gonna have to redo it and get it to you, because we thought that Chairman McClure was gonna be here this morning, and he's not, so it has his name on it and not the vice chair.
Okay, but we can...
We are still...
And I will get it to you.
All right, y'all get together, let's...
I'll get it, thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate your support. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
There we go, you still want to ask a reminder?
Three, two, one, two, three, one, one.
I thought you were...
I thought the man that talked the resolution...
I hope I don't throw you under that test. Hope I got my eyes open on one of them.
And I'm gonna get with you too, so I can get a copy of what you just read.
You said that wasn't a rule?
Oh, thank you.
That wasn't a rule. You talked the resolution, yeah.
Copy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, nine B has been removed, nine C, discussion of two thousand and twenty-four, uh, meeting, commissioner meeting schedule.
Just wanted to ask you a couple of questions. Just wanted to confirm what we need to go and update our meeting schedule together.
Yeah, here it is.
Put a calendar together. First of all, I wanted to confirm that we wanted to stay on Monday.
Um, what you guys thought on that?
I like Monday.
Monday?
That's just breaking the week, that.
And with that being said, we've got two of our holidays this year that fall on Monday, on meeting Monday.
Ah.
Uh, Memorial Day and Veterans Day are both on meeting days. So, I was wanting to get your desire on what you wanna do with those two meetings. Is the, are the Sandhills meetings the second?
We don't have to have them, we...
The fourth Tuesday of the month?
They're Tuesdays, yes.
But it's the fourth Tuesday of the month?
Um...
Or is it the second Tuesday of the month?
Second Tuesday of the month.
Okay, that's gonna hit Veterans Day.
Uh...
So, we could, the twenty-seventh of May, we could move to the twenty-eighth if you would like to do that, do it on Tuesday night, because of the holiday?
I'm okay with it.
Are you good with that?
Mm-hmm.
As long as you give us warning.
Yeah. I will. Now, the November date, what would we want to do?
You mean September? I thought it was September.
November eleventh.
Veterans Day.
Veterans.
Oh, okay.
I mean, would we want to move it to the twelfth and just excuse Commissioner Otford?
Yeah, that'd be okay.
Is that okay?
I'm just okay with her.
Okay, okay.
What, uh, now, September the second, is it?
No, no, we're, we're good in September, um, because that meeting won't be until September the fifth.
Oh, I got you, the ones in the, uh...
Ones in blue are the holidays, and then when I've got something circled with...
I got you, I got you.
Yellow, it meant it was a holiday and a meeting day.
Okay, I had to...
Okay, so we'll move...
We're doing November twelfth?
We'll move the meeting in November to November twelfth, and we'll move the meeting in May to May the twenty-eighth. Are you good with that?
Yeah, just the following day, yeah, okay.
Okay, that gives me direction to move forward, that's all I need.
Okay.
That's what the day after Memorial Day?
Otherwise, it remains on Monday, correct?
Right, right, just those, those two months, it'll be moved to Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay, nine D?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the folks at Pinnacle Bank approached me recently, um, bringing forth a new product for putting, uh, non-emergency cash into accounts. We have an account with a group called North Carolina Capital Management Trust. They have large amount of funds in there, a hundred and seventy-nine million dollars cash. That's all the cash we have to float, you know, the, the organization. Um, parts of that is probably, large part of that, again, is non-emergency, um, meaning if we had to get, you know, we, we don't have to tap into it on a regular basis. Um, the money market account, this is essentially a money market account, that group is, it running at just under five percent. Pinnacle's product, um, allows for what they call insured cash sweep accounts, and I've, I've checked this out with the Treasurer's Office and so forth, it's listed on their available accounts for be able to use, um, and you've got the statutes via email from me as far as how this works. Um, what happens is, is you take those funds, and let's just say we, we, we would take fifty million dollars, we, we, they give them out to a network of banks that are FDIC-insured. The FDIC insured amount's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, they keep it under that, and they send them out into a network of banks, and then become part of that network. So, they receive a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars outlay as well, and it's available then for more cash locally to be distributed into our economy here. It's a way probably in the future to keep some of these smaller regional banks in play to compete with the bigger banks, if you want the truth. The yield on this is a little higher, not much, but a little, but a little on that much money would ge- generate probably somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars a year. So, I find no reason not to do this. There's no liquidity issues, we can go tap into the funds at the same pace we do to, for the North Carolina Capital, um, uh, Trust Fund. There's no penalties for withdrawals, if we change our mind later, withdraw, we won't have any issues there. There's no admin fee for them on this. Their benefit is simply to be a part of that network that receives the two fifty to lend out locally here. Um, so what you have before you is a resolution actually allowing me and Christie to sign off on the account. We have the account set up, all they're waiting for is our signatures upon approval, so, again, I don't see any reason not to do it, it's a way to generate more interest. And it's tied to the federal fund rate, so when the feds move, this moves. And as you probably keep up, uh, much like I do, the, the feds are already talking another twenty-five basis points soon, so, and when that moves, and when it goes down, it's not a mon- it's not an investment account, does that make sense? It's not an IRA or anything that's involved in it, like a mutual fund, we have to watch the stock market and get your funds moved out quickly before you lose. If it goes, if the interest rate goes down at some point in time, all accounts will be going down. You just won't generate as much interest, but you wouldn't generate any interest in the North Carolina Capital Trust account either. So, you don't end up losing anything.
Any questions?
Just one, Mr. Chairman. Um, Casey, we're only dealing with one entity there, right?
Right.
Like, one bank.
Right, they are your central place with one account that you see on your bank statements, all the accounts.
Okay.
Not to exceed two hundred and fifty...
It won't go over to, that's, that's, it can't to keep it in the insured level, and that, again, so we'll have funds distributed in a network of banks. Again, my, my proposition here is fifty million of that funds, I, I think that's a non-emergency amount we won't be, we won't have to worry about, but it goes out into a network of banks in that way. If we have to draw it back, we go through Pinnacle to pull it back in.
If they, if they contract with other banks to put, to invest two hundred and fifty thousand in various banks, who is in charge of that?
They, that's Pinnacle.
If that belly's under, I mean, who's gonna be in charge of the total amount of investment that we put into it?
All those banks would be insured at that two fifty level, so we would, we...
That, to that bank or to the county?
We would probably have to work with Pinnacle to deal with the issue if somebody went under, 'cause there are one-stop shop admin source, but the funds would be insured, 'cause it's all at two fifties in various places.
Then will it not show a deposit from Pinnacle Bank?
The tra- the transaction piece, I'm not sure of, Commissioner Shale, how that would work. We would just go to Pinnacle and say, we've got an issue, especially if we wanna draw it out and move it back to, uh, the Capital Management Trust Fund, we just deal with Pinnacle.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm good with it, I just think we need to make sure that, uh, the money doesn't reflect back to Pinnacle instead of Davidson County.
No, 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 we would come back to us, and then we would probably put it back in the North Carolina Capital Trust Fund.
I don't know, the FDIC would take care of it at that point.
If it goes down, you're probably, you're insured, right?
Right.
'Cause you didn't go over the two hundred and fifty thousand limit. That's kind of the, whoever designed this, is apparently these accounts have been around quite some time. That's the goal, is to keep it under the insured, or at the insured level, so if something happens, you're not outing funds.
I just done...
But the FICA will be to Pinnacle?
No, it would be to us, we would be the deposit.
Well, that's what I'm asking, because if Pinnacle handles the transaction and does the deposit, do we have steps in place that would show that that investment actually came from our money?
I, I think transactionally, you'd have to, 'cause it's all electronic, so it would be, if, I think I know what you're asking.
Yeah.
If the bank goes down on the far end...
Yeah.
How do we know it's our money?
Right.
Well, because of the transactions between our agreement with Pinnacle to do the account, they are the, essentially the trust are the holder of it.
Okay.
Um, and then there's all that paperwork and all that trail leading to their network of choice banks.
So, reflects the trust.
Right, right, it shows that, right.
But I think what Steve's saying, he wants to make sure it's in our name, but from my understanding, it is in our name. There's two hundred banks, I just done the math, it'd take two hundred banks to put fifty million dollars in at two hundred and fifty thousand apiece. So, we'll get a list of every, every one of those two hundred banks that we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, and it'll be in our name in that bank, Davidson County.
But we don't have to go manage it at that level, we just manage it through one bank.
Pinnacle is the managing partner.
Right, but like I say, I would think if one of those banks was to go down, the FDIC knows all the deposits that are in those banks, so they would start dealing directly with...
Right, right, and we've got the, essentially the paper trail listing out what, what our money went to, so...
Right.
We would be covered at that point, and that's the goal, ca- that whoever thought this through is a tool for invest- it wouldn't even be pertinent to do this had the interest rates not go up, you know?
Against the rules, that, I say, that we've got two hundred and fifty thousand in a bank, placed there by Pinnacle, as our entrust for Davidson County, and that bank goes down, who will the insurance company reimburse?
It would have to be us, 'cause we're the account holder.
Not Pinnacle.
Oh, uh, there may be a transactional level that goes to Pinnacle back to us, but it's got to come to us, it's our account.
Okay, as long as that's, I mean, I, that's in play, I...
See, Pinnacle couldn't put it in that account in their name, because then it wouldn't be insured. Well, I guess they could, they could go around it, two hundred banks and put it in as Pinnacle, but if they tried to do another fifty million from somebody else, they'd be over the limit, you follow me?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there's a trustee holding the funds, it's represented by, for us, that money's gonna have to come back to us. All the paperwork is gonna be saying it's such, so we're not outing anything at that point.
I've always said we don't get enough interest money.
Well, like I said, this wouldn't even be a tool to consider if interest rates were not up, and once, if they ever start to come back down, this may not be something we stay involved in. But while it's sitting at whatever it's sitting today, five points or whatever it is, and here they are talking twenty-five more, this thing's tied directly to that. So, if they move twenty-five points a month from now, this account's gonna pick up twenty-five more basis points.
What's our money's drawing now?
Four nine nine, five-ish, right around there, but this one's probably pulling five one eight, five one five, you know what I mean? It don't sound like much, but when you're talking the amount we're willing to deposit, it generates, again, um, could generate a hundred thousand dollars in a year's time.
Yeah, yeah, like that.
Any other questions? All right, here, none, do we have a motion to pass this resolution?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, nine E, animal shelter?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chairman and Commissioners, I'll be very brief, uh, with this. Donna, recently, um, we sent out a, an update of the shelter statistics. And one thing that was pointed into that is the intake at the shelter is, has gone up significantly this year and the adoptions are down significantly. And it's a common theme that we're, that everybody is kind of seeing, all the shelters around and also the rescues. And I know we've had a few days this year where Donna's reached out to me and said, hey, we've got to stop intakes today unless an animal's injured or something like that, uh, just because of space. And we've had a few of those this year. And the question was posed to kind of find out why are adoptions down? And I think just in general, um, like I said, everything, everybody's kind of filled right now, including the rescues. But we've noticed that other jurisdictions, and you've got a sheet there in front of you, um, other jurisdictions have done promotional adoption fees. They either have reduced them or they've waived them. Guilford County right now is waiving their adoption fees, uh, for June and July. I think they're just requiring people to come in wearing red, white and blue or something like that. They're wearing an American flag pin. They can have their adoption fee, you know, waived. Um, or they're reducing it down to twenty dollars. Um, specifically like Randolph County, they do it for cats. And so what you've got there is a list of the range of the adoption fees normally, uh, Forsyth County is normally on cats, anywhere between fifty and a hundred and thirty-five dollars. Dogs, fifty to a hundred and seventy-five dollars. And the higher amount is always for kittens or puppies, uh, from what I've seen. Um, Guilford County, ten dollars to seventy-five, dogs are twenty-five to seventy-five. Uh, Randolph, ninety to a hundred, cats, a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty. Rowan is a flat eighty dollars for dogs and cats. And then Burlington, uh, which is a little unique there, the city runs the animal shelter in Alamance County. Uh, it's fifty dollars for cats, ninety dollars for dogs. And right now they're, they've waived their fee or dropped it to twenty dollars from June through the end of September. Uh, Davidson County here, it's seventy-five dollars for cats and ninety-five dollars for dogs, just to kind of give you perspective. What staff is proposing is to drop the adoption fee to twenty dollars, uh, to run basically through today to the end of September, uh, to see if we can boost those adoption rates up. Um, obviously if we have a higher intake coming in and adoptions aren't happening and can't get them out to rescues, you know, it's, we're reaching an outcome we don't want. You know, we want to try to encourage the, get those into homes, people that, that want them, so.
I got a question for you. It's way out there and you may not be able to answer it off the cuff. How many do we adopt a year, do you know?
Um, actually, I don't know. Give me one second.
Total, I'm, no, you can break it down, but just total cats and dogs?
So far this year, grand total, um, this is through just, I think last, through the end of June, a hundred and twenty-nine dogs and a hundred and twenty-one cats. And then two other, which maybe could be rabbits or, you know, whatever, snakes, things like that. Um, two hundred and fifty-two grand total. That was for this year so far.
Last year we pulled off about four sixty.
Right.
Total.
Here, go run a hand.
I lost it.
Forgot it?
Sorry.
All right, anybody else got any questions and then we'll come back. You'll think about it here in a second. Um, Steve?
What, do, do you have any idea of what's, uh, maybe the sheriff can allude to this too, what the, why the increase in intake? Is it irresponsible behavior primarily?
I told you.
I think it's, I think it's a combo of still people, we saw some people, I hate to say it, you know, releasing animals back to us when, back when the pandemic happened and when times got a little tighter, you know? But it's also an outflow issue. If you can't, if you get bottlenecked with the rescues and they can't handle no more and you gotta, gotta stop, your intake starts to build up too. So it's an inflow-outflow issue. And with this one here, when I asked Jason, you know, we send that monthly report out, uh, every month to the board. And I kind of keep track of that intake, watching it percent jumps around or whatever. I noticed that the adoptions had kind of, that's, at the bottom you see the, basically the fancy percentages there. And if you look at them, the, the rescue percentages, they're holding pretty good. Um, last year's rescue percentage for a year was thirty-six percent. This year it's down to twenty-six.
Yeah, I'm just, I was just wondering, considering the inflation rate, a lot of families struggling to make ends meet. If this, if, if, uh, we're having repercussions from that on the animal side.
A little bit. I mean, it's, I'm gonna tell you in just a second. Like last year, the, the intake was about three thousand. And you gotta remember, that's, uh, that's down from eight thousand, what, uh, seven, eight years ago.
Yeah.
All right, so it's three thousand last year. This year it's at twenty-seven hundred or so, a little under twenty-eight hundred, we got two months to go. And as you know, the summer's the bad, the intake month. Um, so that's one reason for doing this knockoff on the fees through the end of the summer. Cause then it'll slow down enough to where you don't necessarily have to play that game. But we're going to probably hit the three thousand obviously and maybe go above that. It's not much above. It may be a hundred and fifty, two hundred animals out of three thousand. So you're talking what, a few percentage points increase. But, but that few percentage points, when you combine with less people taking out the door.
Right.
Now all of a sudden it's, it ain't that big a deal if the same amount's going out the door, you know? But it's, it's a combo. And then, and then somehow we, I think we checked around, Donna did and saw, well, part of the problem is every, every other shelter running these specials essentially, and we, we hadn't been doing that. So that's why I thought probably important to bring to y'all. And I didn't want to wait to the August meeting because it appears that they, everybody got the same idea I did, which was do it in the summer while we got most animals coming in. In August, you almost run out of time.
And there was one other one too that we, and I didn't put it on the sheet just because of the distance on it. But like another example, Cabarrus County, their animal shelter, they're doing an adopt, uh, for cats, adopt a cat and get another one for free, you know, which is, um, that, that kind of gives me the indication they got a lot of, and of cats coming in.
Let me give you a couple more percentages. So rescue percentages last year, for the whole year, was twenty-six percent of our, of our outflow. It's twenty-seven now. So see, that tells me they're hanging tight. They're able to accept, which is part of your outflow. If you can get animals, good animals you know are going to be adopted, held by somebody else or they go to somewhere else to help get them somewhere, that's fine. Um, return to owners, twelve percent last year, eleven this year, same number. The number that's down fifteen percent on adoptions last year, nine percent trending this year. So there's, there's your problem right there. And, and then the intake again being up probably five, ten percent, something like that.
And I know when Donna and I started talking about this, to put this together, um, we, we tossed, we threw the idea of around like how Guilford County was doing it where the fee was waived. And her and I both didn't really feel like that was a good option to present. And, and we want to make sure there's some, some sort of an application, some sort of an investment into the animal, uh, to make sure that it's not going to some, to where it doesn't need to go, you know? For bad reasons or something like that.
You may not have this information and you may. What about returns? Like, one, one of the things that pops up here is if we do this, you got tons of people going to come out and start adopting animals now because they're only twenty bucks. But how many of those people may return that animal back, back to, so what I'm saying is if we have an influx of people coming in and, and adopting, are we eventually going to have an influx of people bringing those back?
Coming right back to the front door, right. Um, I don't have a percentage on that. I don't believe that's one that they keep track of, of ones that get returned to the shelter. But I think it's pretty rare that that happens.
Okay.
Uh, we've got where they've returned it to the owner, where it's come in and, you know, animal controls picked it up and the owner comes and gets it. But, um, but that's, I, unfortunately I don't have that statistic.
Okay, Karen?
Advertising, do they, do they have a Facebook page?
They do, and I'm glad you mentioned that. That was something I, I failed to mention. Uh, they do have a Facebook page and certainly we would put together a Facebook ad to get that out through both their page and through the county page. And to have flyers to help advertise this.
And we could send it to the sunshine list as well.
Could you spend some money and boost it?
We could, absolutely.
You probably need to boost it. But I was kind of thinking something, I don't know if it worked fifteen bucks and a bag of food, instead of red, white and blue or something, bring a bag of pet food in. And that way it at least shows you that they know how to go buy food and, and bring it, you know? I don't know if that makes any sense or not, but.
Yeah, I mean, they could, uh.
You know, I mean, if, they, they know what going to buy a bag of food is like to, to get a pet that they fix and get.
And that helps your animal rescues too. Because they do food drives down there for the, for the rescues.
Right. Debbie, can Carmen put that on the, Emma, is that right, Carmen? The, the big digital billboard in Thomasville?
Oh, Cameron.
Cameron, sorry.
I can ask Cameron if she can do that.
Cause I know she told me that she holds out a spot for like the county.
Okay.
So put that on that big digital dis, uh, billboard that's there in Thomasville now.
If we can put like a little flyer together, she'll, she can put that flyer on the billboard.
I, I think we could do something like that where it's, say fifteen dollars and a, and a bag.
Bag of food, right.
Um, I, I, I follow your point with that for sure.
You know, cause I just done the math. I mean, you know, it's, uh, four hundred and sixty animals. I mean, the difference between ninety-five dollars apiece and, and twenty's not a tremendous amount of money. The, the cost of boarding them and would eat that money up pretty quick, you know? The difference, but is that, y'all good with that?
Good with that.
Fifteen dollars and a bag of food and, uh.
I think that's reasonable.
You need a motion for that? All right, what would be the motion?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, we reduce our, our price on adoption, uh, on dogs and cats, uh, from its current to fifteen dollars and a bag of food until through September.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Hopefully that'll help. All right, looks like we're going into closed sessions, sir.
We should go into closed session.
Thank everybody for attending today. Appreciate it.
... around here.
Get to work.
Yeah, I promise you.
I don't see why not.
It's my man. I'm in the basket. We're from Long Island.
All right, y'all ready? Call the meeting back to order because I have a motion.
Motion to come back to order, Mr. Chairman.
Exactly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, there were three separate categories of matters that were considered by the board in closed session. The first was a personnel matter. The board provided certain direction to the county manager. There was no formal action taken. Second matter was a matter of real property. It involved approximately a point acre, eight acre tract currently owned by the North Carolina Department of Transportation at the intersection of Redwine Road and Belmont Road. The board gave count or direction for further action. And finally, there were three matters under attorney-client. None of them involved currently pending litigation. And for each of those matters, the board gave direction for further action. Thank you. That's all we have at this time.
All right, I have a motion to...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.